Few items that the board have given us direction on to proceed to this meeting. And one of those was requested Tony to revise the draft letter that would be sent to each of the individuals proposing development within the different tiers. He has distributed, which hopefully each of you have, a letter with the changes highlighted in bold. He is, at the request of the board, emphasizing that the, this whole process is being done due to the actions taken by the governor and the general assembly and the state. So hopefully that changes that he has placed, inserted into the original letter address your desires and you will find that this iteration of that letter is satisfactory. So take a look at it and provide any changes you would like us to make to it.
Eric, after 2012 in the first paragraph, second line down, as it relates to your proposed...
The blue refers to the implications.
Yeah, right here. You have, you ask relate to your proposed subdivision?
Yeah, because it's referring back to the implications relate. As they relate.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest, but as they relate to your...
I guess it does. It reads right without it, but...
Yeah, it'll flow better if you just say as that, it's a word there. Is there anything else on anybody sees?
Now, this is intended to go to developers only or those who have proposed plans in the pipeline right now for subdivisions.
This is only the tier four draft, but there would be one similarly worded for each of the four tiers.
Or property ones in those, in those workshops. Thank you.
So we don't want to put in the date of October 16th as in 2016, remember the deadline?
That's the, that's when you have to have everything recorded by then, but these, these folks are in the...
Well, you'd have to have preliminary plot approval by then to continue.
From what I saw, what you had was a lot of them already had preliminary or final, they just hadn't recorded.
Yeah, I mean, we could add that. Tony refers back to the fact sheet, which is going to be enclosed with the letter. So that should put them on notice of that, but if you feel it needs to be more explicitly stated, then we certainly can add it to the letter.
Don't you think that is key, that they need to have that on their radar? Or, or just underline it on the fact sheet, you know, that maybe their eye will go to it.
And all, all of the people who are serious about completing their projects are working with their surveyors and engineers and that community as well, we're vetting.
Okay.
Anything else in the letter?
I appreciate that it's highlighted, that it's state mandated. That's good.
Okay, so if everybody's okay, we'll go ahead and sign off on Tony's final letter.
Next items of your consideration to review this afternoon are revised versions of the map that was presented to you at the first meeting you had in the second meeting. David will be hopefully being able to pull those up here shortly on the big screen. And I think, David, you have copies for everybody else as well, that you sent through.
Yes, they've been sent electronically.
He has two new maps, draft map three and draft map four. The board may recall that last week there was discussion about the priority preservation areas in relation to tier four on the original draft map that was prepared by staff. David, if you recall, those were the purple areas that were superposed on the map last week. David has taken that and created what is known as draft map three, which is up on the board there in front of you. I don't know, David, if you want to give him a summary as to what you have there as far as the changes to the original map and then the original draft map and then the percentages of what falls into what tier, so the board understands what this is, what this is.
Tiers one and two remain consistent compared to the previous draft that you had seen. Tier four has been expanded to include all of the priority preservation areas and all the previously proposed tier four areas. And as a result, tier three has shrunk to fill the remaining area in terms of overall percentage on this map. Tier one is eight point two one percent of the county's overall area. Tier two is fourteen and a half percent. Tier three is twelve and a half percent. And tier four is sixty-five percent. That's all I have, sir.
What was the first one, tier one?
Tier one was eight point two percent.
Now additionally, last week there was discussion as to how tier four would be affected by those properties that are presently residentially zoned, presently have an approved subdivision that is not been recorded yet, or has a subdivision that is going through the process right now and has not culminated that three-step process. Now, that is known as draft map four, which is on the easel as well as now on the screen. And that gives you an idea as to where within the expanded tier four, based on draft map three, these properties would be, both in the, in the north and south and on the Elk Neck Peninsula as far as PP, as far as the priority preservation areas are included in the comprehensive plan. And David, if you could just give a summary as to what you have there as well as the percentages of all the different tiers for the board so they understand the implications of this map.
Tier one and tier two again remain the same compared to draft map three and the previous drafts that you've seen, so those remain unchanged. Tier four has shrunk compared to draft map three, whereas before it was the entirety of the priority preservation areas. It's now the priority preservation areas minus rural villages, RR zone parcels, RR and rural residential, non-residentially zoned parcels, i.e. business zone parcels, industrial zone parcels. And the proposed major subdivisions have a preliminary or final type approval have also been excluded. The resulting percentages, tier one and tier two are the same with tier one at eight point two percent, tier two again at fourteen and a half percent. Tier three is now twenty-three percent. And then tier four is at fifty-four percent for the county's overall total in this map here.
Can you tell me what percentage is on this one?
Same.
Sorry, no, first one. Draft map one.
Draft map one, which was the original map that was presented to the board back a few weeks ago. This is the planning staff's first attempt at it. Draft map one, tier one was nine point six percent of the county's overall total. Tier two was fifteen percent. Tier three was twenty-nine percent. And tier four was forty-six and a half percent of the county's overall total. There was also a draft map two as well, I can read those statistics if you'd like me.
Sure.
Draft map two, the only difference between draft map one and draft map two is that certain areas of existing in planned sewer that were located outside of the proposed growth area, excuse me, the current comprehensive plan growth area, those areas being specifically the mobile home parks on Mount Zor Road, some of the areas outside Indian Acres, for example, this area here, the Brace Bridge property, some of the rural villages, even though they had, had water and sewer existing there, they became tier three due to state, additional state guidance. The draft map two statistics, tier one was eight point two percent. Tier two was fourteen and a half percent. Tier three was thirty-one percent. And then tier four was forty-six and a half percent. So the difference between draft map one and two is the change in the tier one and tier three.
Yeah, that was actually when I was asking for Cassandra to update you for the correct on the tier one.
So those are the, tier three and tier four are maps that came out of the discussion at last week's meeting as to the different potential scenarios that could evolve into the final draft map that the board would move forward towards a public hearing on. And we present them to you this afternoon for your analysis, discussion and observation and hopefully direction and guidance as to how we look forward from this point, knowing that we have that October 1st deadline that the state would like to receive our map.
Eric, why don't, why don't you also update us on conversations with MDP? I was not able to connect with the secretary, Rich Hall. He and I play telephone tag, but never did connect. I did talk to someone else in their office and I know that, were you actually able to connect with him or was it somebody, somebody else?
I spoke with, ultimately I spoke with Dan Rosen.
Rosen, okay.
Because the fellow you talked to was unable to, unavailable for conversation with me. And the discussion I had with Mr. Rosen concerned the issues that the board was discussing last week with the letter that he had sent to President Mullen earlier in July concerning the recertification of the county's act preservation status and the issue of the priority preservation areas or PPAs that they are more commonly known. And the main issue within that letter was his statement that the state had certified those PPAs as part of the recertification process. I asked Mr. Rosen, so based on that statement, how binding was that upon the board, being that there was discussion that refinement of those areas that was recommended in comprehensive plan had not to date taken place. His response to me was that the Maryland Department of Planning would not interfere or take any position on whether or not the board wanted to go back and revisit those PPAs and refine them. The only time they would get involved in that is three years from now. If the PPAs are different and we reapply to the recertification, then they would make comment along with MDA, Maryland Department Agriculture at that time as to whether or not certification is still warranted based on our efforts over the next three years to preserve agricultural land in the county as well as what we ultimately define as the PPAs if we redefine those further than what the comprehensive plan ultimately shows. So it's, it's not an issue to him as to what the board ultimately decides on what should be a PPA. He said you could do that anytime over the next three years, just that would have to be reported to them in 2015 as part of our recertification report. And then if they have any issues with it, they would make that as part of their responsibility or recertification report. That and much else would basically what his response was.
So I, I think with, going back to the letter, we should, I think the board agrees with staff that we should probably put a draft map in with the letter.
Well, we would also need to have a draft map so we know which letter is...
Right, right, exactly. I understand.
Because we all know what tier they fall into until a draft map is settled upon.
Well, I propose we use the draft three letter, the, the original, I should, I'm gonna say the original draft with the increased tier three that was put on this map. In other words, you put a...
So you want to, you want to take, this, this map and then show...
The tier threes in that.
The tier threes.
Yes, it'll be more spotted. The green will be more spotted by, by tier threes.
So a, a synthesis of draft two and draft four map basically is what you're saying?
Yes. Now, I totally disagree with those that say that we should include all of the priority preservation area for many reasons. First of all, I don't believe that we ever formally, when I say we, the county, the county commissioners, never formally adopted the priority preservation area map that was proposed in the comprehensive plan. Number two is, I don't think that the directive from the Maryland Department of Planning ever required, mandated that all of the priority preservation area, even if it was adopted, should be included in tier four. And I would rather err on the side of less restriction on people's personal property rights and err on the side of less devaluing of people's property because in, it's no doubt in my mind, anyone that's lumped into the tier four area will lose significant choices on what they can do with their property in the future. So I would rather err on the side of keeping tier four as small as possible. And if we decide that it's necessary, we can add to that tier later rather than trying to put too much into it now. And I think that that'll create hardship on too many people, create, have too many negative consequences and be hard to reverse in the future.
Well, I would be for sending draft map four. And in my opinion, that's a real snapshot on the ground. Again, it's a draft, but that's, that's a snapshot on the ground. Because that's telling you what's happening on the ground now or what is in there. And with regard to some of the yellow areas, you can see that it's either developed or it might have a business local or some type of commercial crossroads in those rural areas. I think that, that paints a truer picture if we're gonna work with a draft and we're gonna send that out to some of these folks that are in the pipeline.
Yeah, and I think draft map four, it's important that we are consistent with what the comprehensive plan stated with the forty-one member committee. It went before the county commissioners, we had a public hearing. It's, you know, consistent with the policy and how we're picking up tiers. We can't just randomly arbitrarily pick out certain areas with no basis. And I, I am for going back and revisiting the tier four, but whatever policy we have, it needs to be consistent across the board because it is all about property rights. We can't give special rights to a certain group and, or person.
We don't give rights to people that own them. What we're doing is taking them away.
Well, what about the other people that you're not recognizing? It's randomly being done. We need to have a clear and concise policy as to who is in tier three and who is in tier four. It needs to be fair.
How is it randomly being done?
Tell me why certain properties in, in draft map two are, are pulled out of tier four.
Because I think that Eric and planning staff used the directives of the Maryland Department of Planning when they put that original map together. They used the criteria that they were provided and the direction that they were provided through Maryland Department of Planning when they put that map together. Do you think that they randomly just drew lines on the map?
Yes.
Okay, I disagree.
I think they randomly picked out certain areas from tier three to tier four, or tier four to tier three. And, well, I'd like to hear, what was the justification for Old Elk Neck Peninsula to, to have been changed? That was clearly in the priority preservation area.
Well, one of the criteria to qualify as a tier four is that you must be dominated by agricultural or forest activities and uses. On, excuse me, on Elk Neck Peninsula, while from aerial photographs it may look like it is dominated by forestry, the area has been subdivided extensively over the years so that the, when you get below the cover layer of the aerial photograph, you'll notice that there are many subdivisions throughout that peninsula that one could say that the, the term domination of, by forested areas may be not quite the case there, which you get outside of state level properties, which we do, we have reflected as tier fours. As you can see on draft map four, also the area outside of the Fair Hill Rural Legacy Area was mapped as a tier three because there has been significant development activity within the areas west of the Fair Hill Rural Legacy Area. And we felt that that, the presence of projects that have previously been approved and not yet recorded, properties that are presently zoned rural residential or properties that are presently in the process would make that less of a qualifying area as a tier four than the Fair Hill Rural Legacy Area, which we originally mapped as tier four because that is the focus within that northern part of land preservation effort, efforts not only through rural legacy, but also through Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation. So that was the justification for us in our first attempt to come up with a map to get this discussion started. And as always, you know, we're always keenly interested in improvement to our work, so it's just a...
I appreciate that.
It's just a starting point to get the discussion started.
Yes, yeah, you got the discussion started. But I, I saw the, the guidance that we were given and it was something very open to interpretation. I can appreciate where you ran with it, but I, I would respectfully disagree.
And I would certainly use that guidance and discretion to benefit the citizens of Ziegler County in terms of putting it into a tier three rather than a tier four, whether they're gonna use, lose, love options. David, what is the percentage of tier four in this map four?
The percentage of tier four in this, in this map serves fifty-four percent.
Fifty-four?
Fifty-four percent of the county's overall total.
Yes, sir. So what we're, what we're saying, or what some of the commissioners are saying, that more than fifty-four percent of the county, we want to preserve indefinitely and take choices away from those property owners.
No, what I'm saying is that this is an accurate betrayal of us reflecting what our comprehensive plan says, what we just got recertified for in our priority preservation areas and what is happening in development in the county. And I do advocate going back and refining these areas, but using a clear policy that doesn't infringe on anyone's particular property rights in selectively promoting others over, it, it needs to be across the board, it needs to be fair and equitable.
Well, and to your point, again, it's a draft. We, we'd like to start somewhere. And if you can tell where we went from one, two, three, four, I mean, that's where we're at today. But again, we're gonna have to have a public hearing on this and also state planning, send it down if they have any comments. We're gonna have to come back and have a public hearing on their comments as well. But I, I think it's just a good start. I mean, we've been at this for about four weeks or five weeks and I think it just, it's just a start, it's a draft, but this isn't etched in stone. So, you know, I think if you lay the land use map down of the county and the master word and sort plan map and some of the other maps that are in the comp plan, you can, granted it doesn't match up identical, but it comes close.
When we talk about guidance, there was, there was actually an implementation guidance for the Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act of 2012, Senate Bill 236. And, and I actually printed that out and took a look at it. And there, they talk about what the, their definition of planning areas. And I found it very interesting that under priority preservation areas, they say areas identified by local zoning ordinances as intended for conservation of the act and, and related rural resources lands. Currently, and I asked Eric about that, because currently we only have two zoning districts right now, NAR and SAR. We don't, we have not taken that next step with a comprehensive plan and created a zoning ordinance that's having to do with PPAs. Is that, did I, after our conversation, Eric, am I quoting correctly?
Well, the...
Not one for the Elk Neck Peninsula.
Yeah, there's, there's...
One for the NAR and SAR.
There is no zoning district that is specifically geared towards agriculture. We have, what Commissioner Moore is referring to is the Northern Agricultural Residential Zoning District, which is primarily found in the area of the county, north of ninety-five, out of the growth area and on the Elk Neck Peninsula. And then the Southern Agricultural Residential Zoning District, which is primarily found south of the Sandy Canal in that area. Both of those areas, both of those zoning districts recognize the importance of agriculture. But they also, due to their name, the acronyms SAR and NAR, realize that there will be residential subdivision within those areas as well. Those fish, those zoning districts are also within the land use districts and the Rural Conservation District, which is the area north of ninety-five again to the Pennsylvania Line. And then the Resource Protection District, which is the area south of Sandy Canal. And those, both of those land use districts in the comprehensive plan, go back to what Commissioner Moore is referring to, where the county is attempting to maintain its rural character and maintain its agricultural viability of the agricultural operations that exist in those areas. So the, what the plan is, comp plan is recommending, is hopefully being implemented by both the NAR and the SAR through the uses that are permitted in that, through the densities that are permitted for, for residential development and through the open space requirements, buffering requirements, landscape requirements and all the other requirements from the zoning ordinance that would apply to anything that is occurring, not agriculturally, within those two zoning districts, within those two land use districts.
If I may, the comprehensive plan did not countenance, just as it did, just as it did not countenance a separate zoning classification for priority funding areas, neither did it countenance a separate zoning classification for priority preservation areas. They can be thought of as overlays on the other zoning districts that were created with the adoption of the zoning ordinance, but, which are consistent with the land use areas that are enumerated in the comprehensive plan.
Well, I have a, a number of concerns with, I, I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse. If we have not truly defined what we want as our priority preservation area, I think that we cannot move ahead and create a tiered map based on that.
It's a draft, so we're, we can come back and revisit this, correct?
So we, right now it would be a draft and that, whatever you settle on is your ultimate draft. We would put that on the county website and we would schedule a, a public hearing on it. And then people could come in and tell you, we agree with it, we disagree with it, it's fine as it is, don't make any changes, whatever the case may be. Then you would vote on that and say, we adopt this map as it is, we adopt this map with the following changes. Whatever occurs, you would adopt it at that point and then we would send it to the state. And then they would have the opportunity to make comments on it, but nothing else, the final decision rests with you guys as the board of county commissioners to decide. And then at that point, if, if they make comments on it, by the requirements of SB two thirty-six, we, we would be required to have another hearing to review whatever comments the state may have. And then in 2016, when we do our next six mandated, state mandated, state law mandated six-year review of the comprehensive plan, whatever tiers are adopted by the county commissioners would be, become part of the county's comprehensive plan at that time, again, as mandated by the state law.
It also says in this guidance document that in tier four, there, there will not be future growth as, as part of the overall plan. And the, the more, the more that we put into tier four, we are doing a fundamental shift. Not only are we taking away property rights and values, but it's a fundamental tax shift because those property values will be lower. And that means in order to maintain the current revenue stream that we have, other taxes will have to be raised. And that is, that is something that I feel like it's, this is a lot more important than putting together a draft map and saying, well, we can change it later. This is a fundamental shift in our tax structure.
Not necessarily, because that ground is taxed as ag, it's not taxed as residential. It doesn't get taxed as residential until the plan's recorded. So if you're gonna value real property as agriculture, it's not necessarily the density that can be achieved on that parcel. It's more of what the agricultural operation, you use the income approach, not necessarily the market.
And we're talking about assessments, not appraisals.
Well, the point is...
And the tax assessment doesn't do that, Jim. Tax assessment doesn't do that.
Yeah, but the tax assessment is still on agriculture land, it's not on residential land.
But what we're doing... But what we're doing here is, you're assuming that all of that green area is agricultural. It's not. There's lots of that green area that is not agricultural, there's lots of that green area that's other properties other than agricultural.
Right.
And what you're trying to do is take the NAR and SAR and make it agricultural when it's not really agricultural. What you're trying to do is take the residential out of the tier four delineation that you're doing. And there's lots and lots of places that are green on the map that are not agricultural. And you're trying to force preservation of agricultural properties that are not there.
That's why that map is...
And there's lots of properties that are not going to qualify for agricultural assessment because they're not farms.
They don't have to be farms, they can still be forests and woodlands, that still qualifies as an ag tax.
What they're going to get is socked by devaluation, and the assessment will lower their taxes because they have limited choices of future development.
But their assessment's not based on...
It will be after the tier four. This is a whole new world that we're going in. It'll be a complete fundamental shift of the concept of zoning and land use restriction.
Well, number, first off, if you can see the yellow speckles there, that's already what's been developed in that area. Okay, nobody's forcing anything on anybody. Again, let's, let's come back to the fundamental...
No, that's not true. The Cecil County Commissioners have the full discretion of delineating this tier four map.
No, this law that Governor O'Malley signed is what, is what we're being forced to do here. If I had my choice, I wouldn't be sitting in here right now.
Okay?
I'm being honest with you. And all five of the... Wait, let me back up, because I want to speak for a minute. We all signed a letter, went down and testified in opposition to this bill, we were, Mako was in opposition, and then they testified in favor with amendments, and then this deal was brokered with Mac Middleton to get to where we are today here. And now a report has to be issued to the General Assembly in January from state planning of which counties complied with this law and which ones didn't. And the counties that don't comply with this law, it is then up to the General Assembly to take the appropriate action against those counties. Now, if you have counties that aren't going to do this, state planning is going to turn around and say, you know what, we gave the counties, we listened to Mako, we gave them a seat at the table, and look at what they did, now we want another bill in to take it away from them like we originally wanted to do. And that's what's going to happen. Now, I don't like sitting here doing this either, but I'm trying to find a happy medium here. That's all.
More than fifty percent of the county is not a happy medium, Jim. What I find, that there's certain commissioners sitting at this table right this very minute are trying to take advantage of this horrible law, and they're trying to shut...
Point of order, Mr. President.
This is my opinion that we are overdoing this.
Point of order, point of order. No, we're just trying to figure out how to put a draft map together moving forward. This thing is an etched in stone, and I've said that three times, I'm going to say it four times.
And I've seen this happen before, it doesn't matter if it's the animal care and control ordinance or whatever, oh, we're going to have to draft, we'll put it out to public hearing, we'll put it... And what do I see happen after public comment? We adopt it anyway. We don't really care.
I don't want to have...
We put stuff out there, and we're just going to put the public hearing, and then we adopt it, no matter what the public has to say.
Mr. Hodge, I don't want to have the public give the wrong appearance that we're picking and choosing special lands because of certain people, maybe commissioners, sitting on this board.
Point of order.
Okay? That it's a fair process.
Let her speak.
Okay.
What do you want to do?
Okay.
Wait, I, I, I'll be happy to...
A tax, whoever, where they come from are unacceptable.
All right, well, I'll have a point of order.
I just want the public to come in, and they will have the opportunity, give us ideas of what policies of how we can fairly pull out tier three. I'm willing to hear that. This needs to be fair. Right now, I'm sorry, but the justification for those other areas, they're going to come into question very quickly, and I'm not supporting that.
And to that point, if you look at draft three and draft four, you can see where we pulled out the business local, the rural residential in those areas already, so it's not just a solid color in one direction or the other.
The PPA draft, the proposed map that was put into the comprehensive plan was supposed to be a draft, but here we are, two years later, and it's being used, not as a draft, it's being used as the overlay for this Senate Bill 236. Now, I'm sure that two years ago when the comprehensive plan was adopted, no one really viewed this was going to happen, but we're here and we're doing this now. So you're saying that this is just a draft, but the problem is those drafts that don't get changed and don't get handled correctly, then become law.
Get changed and handled correctly, that is the key word. You've got to make sure it is changed and handled correctly.
But it hasn't been changed?
And that overlay was, that was an overlay on the comprehensive plan. And I'm for refining these areas, but we need to do it correctly.
Well, why don't we refine it before we do the tier map?
That's what I looked at with the draft map four, because you extracted out the areas in there that have either, that are in the pipeline, that have either been developed, going to be developed, or might have a business local or business general zoning in those areas. When we voted on this in 2010, there was no asterisk that say, well, you know, once we vote on this, the previous board, then we're going to come back and refine these PPAs. That was never part of, that was never part of what was sent down to state planning when they signed off on the comp plan, that there was some type of asterisk next to the plan that this had to be revisited.
But Jim, it's in the comprehensive plan, that'll be redefined.
Okay, but it doesn't say when, does it?
No, it doesn't say when.
No, it does not.
And that's, that's where you and I disagree on this emphatically, because I remember when we passed the comprehensive plan, it was a thirty thousand foot view. I remember that word saying over and over again, that these plans are just thirty thousand foot views, and that whether it's the zoning maps, whether it was the PPAs, whether it was the zoning ordinances, the conference, excuse me, the subdivision ordinances, these all had to be adopted after we passed the comprehensive plan. That none of these maps, none of these ordinances were in the comprehensive plan approval, that it was a guideline, a big overall view as a guideline on what we had to do next. Now, why didn't we refine, why didn't we redo, why didn't we work on the PPA? I don't know. But I think it's ludicrous for us to say that that priority preservation area map that's in the comprehensive plan is the map and the only map, and that's the end of the story. That is not the case, and I'll go to my grave saying that because I happen to be on the comprehensive plan review committee and as a county commissioner that approved it, and I never, ever approved the comprehensive plan with the presumption that we were also approving that priority preservation area map.
How about the other maps in there, just for...
They were thirty thousand foot views. All of them, including the zoning maps. That's why we had to go through that comprehensive rezoning process. And then we did every parcel, one by one, to refine the zoning maps. We went through that process. We should have gone through the same process with the priority preservation area. Not that we had to do parcel by parcel, but we had to look at it. No one in the staff, as I know what happened, because Diana Brumall and Owen Thorne and a couple people on the agricultural subcommittee put that map together and threw it into the comprehensive plan. That's what happened.
Powerful. Wow.
Because it was a presumption that this, this was a guideline, this was a start...
It was still an overlay.
It was not, it was, it was, it was put together by a small group for consideration purposes. It was for consideration purposes. It was never meant to be, this is it, this is final, this is never adopted.
I'll say it again, it's an overlay, we can go back and refine it, I'm waiting for the public to come back and tell us how they would suggest we refine it, it needs to be a policy that we adopt and it's applied fairly.
And how did the public's comments about the animal care and control were in its goer?
There's a number of changes we need to make.
Right, but we're not here to talk about animal care and control. So, we settled on the letter, tried to settle on the map, draft map for discussion to be mailed out, and then, well, we can settle on for public hearing.
Now, Robert, I suggested that the condensed, or what do you call that, the concentration of the L G areas, and also we pulled out the subdivisions. Is there any, anything that you would like to suggest?
Well, I certainly support the pulling out and converting those areas, those zones to tier three.
Give us a policy, give us a suggestion.
But I would go back to the original map and reduce the tier four area. And use, and use the judgment of the planning staff as the justification for the map. I really feel strongly with their efforts, and I don't believe that they made this stuff up out of it.
I agree. I would agree with that.
Well, I would not agree with the original draft map because there were a couple errors that reflected in draft map two, that correction for that understanding is correct.
Well, my, my proposal was the original map with the changes that were made on map four.
So consolidation of draft map two and draft map four?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we put together a consolidation of draft map two and draft map four to be put out for public hearing.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion on that? I just want to say in the law here, which I brought up when we met last week, that the governor signed, was that the rural legacy and the priority preservation areas were to be tier four here. So, and I'm just going to make that statement, that that's, that's part of the law to adopt a map, so.
It doesn't say shall include all of the territory, whether it's all...
It says priority preservation areas, I mean, you can split hairs, some maybe.
Well, I, in this particular case, because of the consequences to the property owners, I will split hairs.
Okay, that's fine, you're entitled to do that. Okay, so there's a first and a second to merge draft map two and draft map four? So I'll just call a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
No.
I'm opposed too. I'm just going to pick my guns on draft map four as a draft because it gives you the footprint on the ground right now for what we have. I'm willing to go to the public hearing and listen to what people have to say and move from there, and if we have to refine those PPAs, I'm okay with that too.
I'd like to make a motion that we refine the PPAs before we do our draft map.
There's a...
I didn't make a motion. And that's in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it, but I, it's important that we meet the deadlines set up.
Right, because you, we would have to go through a comp plan amendment with that, we would miss the October first deadline.
Is there a county with the October first deadline there?
No, the law says December 31st, but the state has said in their guidance document they want it by October 1st so they would have time to review these things. They anticipate, I guess, a multitude coming in throughout the state and getting comments back to us prior to December 31st. So statutorily, we're required to get in, adopt a map by December 31st of this year.
So if we can put the map, we can send this down, and then they send it back with comments, and if there's no objection, you don't have to put it out to public hearing, but I would advocate that we do put it out to public hearing.
We do, the law says. If the state comments on it, then we have to have another public hearing on those comments. They're non-binding, you don't have to do anything with it, you just sit there and we would give you a report saying the state had all the comments on the adopted map. You don't have to do anything if you don't choose to do so.
Even so, we can have a public hearing and then make changes.
Well, that's what I'd like to do personally.
Well, our concern was that the PPAs that map that was put into the comprehensive plan was not from, it was, it was meant to be refined, it was something that was put into the comprehensive plan, and I think we had an opportunity to address it before we adopted tier map, and we had an opportunity to do it right the first time, as opposed to going back and changing it. And that's why I think it would be appropriate for us to go and appropriately identify the priority preservation areas.
I'll just, you know, the timeline is something that Commissioner Moore and I, I think, was what Commissioner Hodge raised. To refine the PPA, the priority preservation areas are part of the comprehensive plan right now because they were adopted as part of chapter seven, I believe it was, and to change what is shown on those maps, you'd have to adopt a new priority preservation area map to replace the one that is in the comp plan. In order to do that, there's a minimum sixty-day requirement to do a comprehensive plan amendment. We have to draft a new map, get your okay, send it out for sixty days, send it to the state, send it to all joining jurisdictions and all the municipalities, and then see if there's any comment that they, any of those entities would have, and then bring it back before you for a public hearing. So that would take us into, at a minimum, and looking at October or something like that, and then scheduling, the sixty days would take us into October, and then scheduling a public hearing would be pushing it probably into November. So we would be cutting it very close to the December 31st deadline to get the decision on, on this, this map, just throw that out there as public hearing.
Sure.
Decision-making process.
I have a feeling that the public is going to come up with some very creative suggestions for how to pull out some more of the areas on the draft map. So I dare to advocate the extending the deadline, waiting to send it down for the refining areas.
Is there ever a second to the Commissioner Moore motion?
Yes.
There was. Okay, is there any other discussion on that? All right, I'll call a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One of the things, though, in the certification report that we sent down was the fact that the PPAs were mapped in the report that they signed off on in the letters that you sent, Eric, you sent one, and I sent one, asking for the recertification through the report. So when everybody's talking about the refinement, they signed off on the report with what we had in there already and accepted that. So I'd just make that statement with that moving forward, but I'd like to just move forward with the draft map four, take a public comment, and then we can come back and look at dressage and the PPA areas and any of the other issues that were going to be associated with the map and some of the questions or concerns that folks would bring up.
I'd concur with that, that we go forward with draft four.
I'll second.
Okay, so there's a first, second, just move forward with draft map four for public comment, concerns, ideas?
Yes.
And there's a first and a second, is there any discussion on that?
I would like to see, fifty-four percent does seem pretty high, I'd like to see that number come down, but I think this is a fair way of going back.
Is there any other discussion on that?
Well, I don't think it's a fair way. I think the fair way would be to use the directives and the criteria set out by the Maryland Department of Planning, and I feel that our planning staff followed those directives and came up with a map that had a much lower percentage of tier four. And it's, it's obvious to me that there's an attempt to take advantage of the situation to create this taking by the county of other people's property, and I don't support it at all.
I just said I advocate that it be left.
Okay, then you want, you want to do it again.
And then I think, Mr. Hodge, you don't want me to state the obvious here, all avoided, okay?
Well, why don't we do this, Tony and I talked, I know in Prince George's County, they had one of the planners up from MDP to answer questions at the public, was it Prince George's County, they had one of the gentlemen up there for that?
They had, they had planners at a number of venues, whether to talk to the public or to the workshops with the surveyors.
Right. And that's something he and I discussed just today with regard to maybe that would be an opportunity too, to have someone up who has worked on this, to be there to answer questions when we go ahead and do have a public hearing on that. And that's something we throw out, that it might be good to have somebody there of how they got to where we're at here. So that's an idea too.
Is there a second to Commissioner Dunn's motion?
Oh, it was Commissioner...
Yeah, Commissioner...
So, okay, so is there any more discussion on that? Okay, I'll call a vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
Well, we will use... Well, we will use Draft Map Four then as part of the introduction to this letter.
Right.
For the board's active essence, we'll put it on the website, we'll be able to look at, see if we can memorize these folks with it, and then this will be the map that will go forward for the public hearing.
Eric, can you put on there that we're looking for policies to, in the Tier Four area, to make Tier Three? I don't know how you'd state that, but it'd be good to start gathering suggestions.
You would like input from the public, asking how...
Examples, suggestions of...
Tier Four could be further refined.
Refined.
All right, there you go. With the, the law does not mandate it, it just says a public hearing shall be held on board of county commissioners, would you like us also to go before the planning commission for their recommendation?
Yes.
Do you, Commissioner Dunn?
I do. Will this hearing be on August 21st?
This map?
No.
We can if you want to, but we're not going to be able to make the planning commission agenda, though. I would recommend if you wanted to go to the planning commission, you'd be scheduled for any of your September meetings, maybe the first one in September. Well, I'm trying to think. The planning commission meeting's going to be after that, so it'll have to be your second meeting, which you would have to...